Yeah.
So with the intentions.
Okay, whatever.
Yeah, I get that. Perfect.
Well, he's with me.
Charles, I see you. How you doing?
Good.
Good.
This is his normal attire.
I know.
I'm so impressed.
Unless it's a funeral or a wedding, nothing's.
Just like the way it feels.
There you go. Suit up.
Well, welcome.
Yes, sir.
I'll sit down there.
No, good down there.
Sure.
Perfect for me.
Yeah, but you have lawyer that are looking so good in a shirt and tie.
That's right. Somebody's got to bring him down.
I'm wearing Costco sweater. I need to go get a shirt and tie. Yes, yes.
That's on more.
All right. So I'm gonna call the order. The city council workshop, January ninth, twenty twenty four, six thirty. Um. The, the, the main thing we're doing here is the Parks Commission joint session work plan review. Um. And we have the Parks Commission members here with us and staff that works with the Park Commission. Um, I'm gonna let you take it from there, Mr. Swenepohl.
Yeah, we could do that. So the intent of tonight's Parks Commission and City Council joint workshop is to address the following items. That was given in your packet as well. Uh, the first one is review the twenty twenty four Parks Commission work plan. Uh, we'll discuss the pinwheel parcel search update. Uh, number three, the Parks Master Plan update. And we'll review those changes proposed by the Parks Commission in that work plan. Those changes include parking, park awareness, design standards, uh, city park management. And finally, we'll discuss any additional Park Commission goals for twenty twenty four. Our first part of our, uh, work plan is our planning project and development. Um, uh, first item on that agenda was to update our Parks Master Plan. Um, one proposal by the Parks Commission, and if you don't mind me doing it that way, just make, discuss their changes in there as well.
Sure.
Was to re, uh, reword that to say, review and make recommendations and update the Parks Master Plan versus just update the Parks Master Plan. Um, when I do get to that part on the, on the master planner, we'll review, uh, just briefly on where, where we're at with that Parks Master Plan, um, over the next few months. Uh, the second item was Washington County's, um, Central Greenway Trail Plan. Um, in March, we'll have Connor from, uh, Washington County, he'll come and address kind of where they sit, where, um, where that project sits right now. It is currently back on their CIP. I believe it's twenty twenty seven, uh, is when they're gonna start doing some more in-depth items with that. So we do still have that as a priority one to continue our efforts of not only helping fund that project, but also be, just being aware of, of, being available for when that project does come of, appraised that, um, we can provide some input. The third item, I outlined options for additional parking in Tablin Park. Uh, that item two is also discussed by the Parks Commission for some changes. They requested. To change the verbiage of that to outline options for additional parking. And the reasons for that came forth, and, um, you guys can add if you'd like, uh, was we were, uh, got a presentation from, um, help me out, Marty.
Sunfish Lake Park.
Correct, about additional parking at Sunfish Lake Park. Um, and so, um, instead of just having that as Tablin Park, they, I had requested that we change that as an outline for additional parking in general, as a whole. Uh, maybe look at our park system and as a, as a whole and provide options, not only as to Tablin Park, but, uh, as, um, also of Sunfish as well.
Adam, quick question on that. I don't know if this is the time to ask questions or not.
I think it's just an open conversation.
With that one, and it could be with other ones too, how much overlap do we see between that and the Parks Master Plan? Is, is parking can be a topic that is a part of the master plan itself, or can, is this separate enough to be its own item?
So it is an item that when we did our current walkthrough was an item that was brought up. Um, and it was addressed when, you know, one of the, one of the items that was addressed at each park that we went to, as far as how much parking is there, what, what we see as an issue there, right? So those items have been addressed, um, with our, with our contractor that's putting that together. So I would, I would hope that that's part of our plan in there too.
All right, okay.
Thank you.
Uh, the fourth item there is outline options for additional sand volleyball courts. That was added about three years ago. Um, so this year we will provide some options to the Parks Commission, uh, lay out some availabilities, what we have in our parks, and get them to possibly, um, make some suggestions to the City Council for a proposed new sand volleyball court. The fifth item Pebble Park Playground Set and the sixth one Demarterville. Um, as you know, we have, uh, thirteen playground sets within the city. So over the next, and those are all outlined in our CIP and over the next twenty years to be replaced. So this is just kind of the start of those replacements. We'll see a lot of them in the next two, three to four years, and then they'll probably gather off. But, um, all those, um, were put back into our CIP just because of the long, um, overdue work that those needs to, uh, that those playground sets need. So, uh, so this year we'll review both Pebble and Demarterville for replacement. Uh, the last item for our planning and projects was, um, open the Lake Elmo Dog Park. A couple of things at that was just, first of all, naming the dog park, and secondly of all, uh, bringing forth to them some options of some, some features that we'd put there, including park benches and, uh, you know, our open gates and our small dog park. Um, just bring some options forth for that, some funding.
Just a side thing on that, we're still aiming to spring of this year to open?
Yeah, so the biggest thing with that would be the fencing and stuff, so they'd have to wait till the frost is up.
Right.
Uh, or gone. Um, but, and we have some potential asphalt and some concrete involved with that as well, so that would come in that, you know, probably that spring to early summer for that.
Thank you.
Questions on or additions to planning development?
Let's remember her.
Thank you. So with the replacements, kind of bouncing off of Councilmember Holt's question, is the replacement schedule gonna be part of the mass, the Parks Master Plan as well as you were going through that process, do you believe?
So we can't, we kind of had that laid out prior to. We, um, cause we went through and itemized each one of those, how old they are and when they should be replaced.
Okay.
Um, so we did provide them that information of where those lay in our CIP, so, um, that will likely be in, in the works plan as well, or in that, uh, Parks Master Plans.
Okay, and then my only thought too with that is I know we've kind of bounced the idea around of, um, possibly not replacing, but rather having one big playground instead. Um, I guess, again, knowing that we're working on the Parks Master Plan, um, it's probably too soon in that to know if there was any conversation around that really. But how would we manage that then if we are, if we do end up going down that road of, we do wanna combine parks and, and have one more central park rather than various smaller parks? Um, any concerns with starting the replacements then, you know, this year rather than possibly waiting? I mean, I hate to even bring that up, cause I know it's overdue for the replacement, um, but that just was crossing my mind is, gosh, if, if that is the direction we go with the Parks Master Plan, a more central, large park, do we wanna start replacing currently this year?
So two of our parks that we do have up there that are on there right now, Pebble and Demarterville are probably more of our bigger open parks. Um, what I will present to them next week is the financial side of that to the big point. So we have placed in our CIP one hundred and twenty-five thousand for each park replacement or playground replacement. Um, we're pushing towards more towards those parks and not utilizing all that money. So sometimes that fitness type, uh, equipment is a little less more, is less expensive. So maybe we go that route as far as the big giant playground slides, you know, um, you know, our second tier type tower systems, and maybe you use a flat, you know, item that's more fitness related. So, um, where we can save money that way and put in a different attribute to our, our park system as far as not just the slides and swings, but more physical activity.
But I would agree that's something that needs to be done. It's a, it's a good point, but these particular ones, I think, are more than twenty years old.
Yeah.
So you've got the clock ticking on both sides. So, and I know that when we go through and we do the replacement, we'll do to, let's say, optimize or assess that part, but it is hard then to look at a, an integrated thing. So I think you're bringing up a very good point.
Cool, awesome.
Yep.
Do you answer, hopefully answer your question?
No, that's good. I, I know, I mean, it's, um, it's a working document, so, uh, it's just, I, I guess I wanted more so to at least express that thought and bring that up, cause I know you brought those, that up before in the past as well.
Yeah, I think we have addressed that, or we, we've discussed that in the past too, sometimes like we remove the playground set or the swing set at Kleis Park, and that's a situation there, or that one is coming up for renewal as well, sooner than, uh, some of the other ones. It might be a consideration, just a, a complete downsized of that one.
Sure, great, thank you.
Our next item on the key, on the work plan is the maintenance and refurbishing. Again, projects in this category are carried out mainly by the Public Works Department, uh, and don't rely on park dedication funds. So, uh, a lot of these, uh, changes or, uh, updates to there come right from the Public Works, uh, budget. A Parks and Needs Assessment, that's completed every year by park staff and supervisors. A lot of times we'll make changes if it's last year, just changed to the Re Park Parking Lot, made that one a little bit bigger, as well as just planting, you know, itemizing trees like at, uh, Lyons Park, just understanding that eventually we're gonna, we, we propose to have more shade there, right? So, um, just itemizing, we put in, um, almost, um, over a thousand dollars worth of shade trees in that area. Uh, just to, just some assessments that we do as we walk through our parks that we see that as a need. Pilot Park, we added two, um, soccer nets up there this year, um, which has been a huge hit for, uh, the younger crowd up there as well, so.
Remind me where Pilot Park is?
Eastern Village Airport. Airport, by the airport.
Oh, got it, yeah, got it, all right, thanks.
Yeah. Um, Asphalt Trail Maintenance Inspections, uh, that's completed every year by staff again as well. Um, this upcoming year, um, we don't have any trail seal coating this year, but we'll still continue to do our inspections for, um, for the following year, for twenty twenty five.
Question on that for inspections, obviously playground equipment specs critically important for child safety. Is there ever inspection in terms of the ground itself? Like, in terms of, there are certain parks, I know Pilot Park is an example, where the ground is to the point where you have potholes where you can easily, a kid is running, they go down, their ankle is getting turned. Obviously, it's been, you know, eight or nine years, the ground is slowly improving, but is that ever a part of inspection process? I mean, it's never been, it had the original carpet seed back in the day, but obviously, we're not gonna invest in that, but is that ever something that we consider where the ground is so bad, it just gets a little bit of a, a facial lift?
Is that in the grass areas or?
Yeah, where the soccer nets were, I mean, it, it's shot.
Yeah, so that, that is one part that we've looked at in the last couple of years, especially around the outside border of that. We've noticed that, you know, it's either the substance, the gravelly, whatever, it's not growing grass, so, uh, between the trail and the roadside. So that is, um, something that I concern that we have seen in the past. As far as the holes and things out there, probably we wouldn't notice that, you know, just walking by or, uh, driving by, but something will get taken into account.
And I, cause I don't wanna make it just about that part, cause I'm sure, especially with older parks, if, if, you know, we don't irrigate any of them to begin with, just grasses can be not great from time to time. I, I didn't know if that was a part of any of the review.
So we've overseeded a couple of parks in the last couple of years already, so keep an eye on that. We were going to do a couple of parks last year, but the drought, we weren't gonna stick the money into it, so.
Makes sense, thank you.
One more thing, and I think Parks people just figured this out last meeting, and I'm sure the City Council knows all about this.
Doubtful.
The city has, uh, in the Works Department, a certified inspector of playgrounds, okay? And that's the person who goes around and does these, uh, reviews. So I, none of us knew that on the Parks Commission, so it's very interesting.
Yeah, so Public Works Staff, they are eligible. We have one certified playground inspector. He does monthly inspections throughout the summer. He provides information back to us, that's somewhat, we take those into account when we make recommendations to the Parks Commission as well as City Council. Um, third section, uh, additional park incentives. Um, hold a joint park session meeting with the City Council, we're doing that today. Seek land for purchase for multi-use sport. Uh, Sophia and I will talk about that, uh, briefly in our third section. Um, naming the new dog park, uh, we've had a survey out, um, as well as took in names at the Light Up Lake Elmo event. So come in front of the Parks Commission at the next meeting, uh, to make suggestions for a new name for the dog park. Uh, park tree planting, that's, uh, been a, a recommendation by, uh, Parks Commission member, as well as city staff, uh, to increase the number of trees that, that were, um, that are out in our parks for the purpose of shade in general.
We are in Arbor City, are we not?
Yes, we are.
Sounds good.
Uh, the Add Demartville Wildlife Park to the grant application. Uh, this has been something that we've been looking at the last couple of years. We do a ski application for Re Park and Pebble Park right now, or, and Sunfish, sorry. And so we're looking to add Demarterville to that as well. That'll include just making some signs and updating the trails a little bit as far as, uh, trimming back, uh, through the Demartville area. The last one is oversee the efforts of the buckthorn removal at the Sally Manzero Center. Um, that's just an effort on, on the supervisor's part to continue to work with, um, our volunteers over there as well as, um, George and Tony, um, who kind of lead that, those efforts into that buckthorn. We're currently on phase three of that, however, there's still parts of phase one and two that we continue to see, uh, forthcoming, or asking for our ten percent donations to their, ten percent funding to help those projects as well, so.
Councilmember Beck's room.
Um, just to clarify, so that, uh, so the buckthorn removal, that's the grant that's happening, and, and so Director Powers is connected weekly, is it weekly on that? So, okay, perfect.
Some changes, uh, proposed by the Parks Commission, or I should say changes, there are additions. First one was to improve resident awareness via parks, uh, via social media, if it's Instagram. Refresh the city website by highlighting park happenings, the opportunities, uh, for visitors' input and donations. Uh, they categorize this as a number four. Pat, if you wanted to add anything additional to that one?
Um, I've been looking at a number of other city parks websites, and a number of them have opportunities for, uh, people, uh, not necessarily, um, citizens of the city, um, to donate, particularly benches and so forth. In fact, some say that they can't take any more donations, they have so many benches, and I thought, what a great problem that would be. Um, I think it would be nice to have something on our website, just recently, three or four sisters donated a bench in Sunfish. They don't, I don't think any of them live in the city, do they, Adam?
Uh, no, they were from Oakdale.
Yeah, a, and they used the park and they donated this great bench, and, and I think if it, that were out in the open, maybe some other people would consider it. We had a donation in Tablin Park last year, the previous year, and I think, um, having something like that on our website might inspire people if they wanna, you know, remember someone or, or, or just donate something that their family would use, find useful. I think that would be a really neat addition to put, um, on our website. And to have, uh, like, these sisters donated this, have a picture of them, a blurb, you know, saying, this is what they've done, and maybe highlight different parks, you know, every month a different park, you know, this is what we have to offer here, because there's so many new citizens in Lake Elmo now, and they're not aware of it. And there's, I've lived here for almost fifty years, and I wasn't aware of all the parks until I was on the Parks Commission. So I think it'd be a nice way to get people know, to know more about our parks and, and what they offer, to, to have photos, opportunities, or, or something out there. Uh, when I was at the Light Up the Tree Night, there were so many people that were new, almost everybody I talked to was new to the city, like, within three years. And they talked about a lot of different things, and, um, they were not aware at all of all the parks and what we have to offer. And I just think we need, we need to get that out in the open more, find, you know, some different ways to present it to the, to the public.
I'm sorry, but does, does our city have an Instagram account? Did we just get that? It says.
No.
Via new social media, Instagram, okay. Why, I mean, just to bring this up in front of you guys, cause we were talking about it, like, I don't know, a month, two months ago. I feel like the city should have an Instagram account, I mean, not only to reach people, I, I mean, just to reach people, to promote parks, other issues, I, I mean, maybe bring interest, more interest into like, the council meeting themselves, but I, like, I don't, I don't know, it just seems like something we should have. I don't know how to say that in any other words, just, I don't know.
Yeah, I remember you, I think you brought this up last year, right, just some more social media that, that people that are younger use.
Right.
That aren't Facebook and Nextdoor, right?
I mean, even, even me, I don't remember the last time I, well, probably a couple of months ago, going on lakeelmo.org, I just, but I, I would see everything the city wants me to see or, or, or know about if I were on my phone just after school or, or whatnot.
Got it. And then, I would say, we haven't quite adapted, uh, that well, but, you know.
I'm just putting it out there.
Yep, progressively, um, performing better, I guess, is continuous improvement, right? So as we do that, uh, that's something we need to keep in mind.
I love the idea as well. I agree with both the Instagram aspect, but also especially whether it is events, things are coming up, I fully agree, especially on the donation aspect. Um, I wouldn't, I mean, I would know, I should probably email the city about it, but I wouldn't necessarily know, you know, is there a form, is there a place, is there a minimum, you know? We won't accept four dollars, you know, we would, but is there like a recommended minimum? Or if you're looking to do something, here's the cost of a bench, FYI. Like, I wouldn't even know what the cost is for a appropriate city-approved bench. Or can you build one and donate? I think those are all very good things. Can you donate a tree? That happens a lot of times, especially in small towns, there'll be opportunities for donating trees as well, and I don't know how we feel about that from a public work standpoint, but just throwing it out there, I, I fully agree.
Uh, the second change in that, in this category was developed dot, design standards document for the parks. Peter, if you wanted to discuss this one?
Uh, I had raised that as a potential item, just because I, I think it's, for lack of a better word, a, a sort of a standard to, to have a standard, uh, development standards for, and use standards for, for parks and other facilities. But obviously, we're talking about parks, so, um, things like, that we're talking about tonight, park benches and donations, for example, uh, a, a document that outlines what, what our benches look like, uh, what our garbage receptacles look like. I think we've got some new garbage receptacles in the, in the parks, which is great. I had asked about, well, do we do recycling? Um, you know, where, where does that decision come from? Does the staff make that decision? Is that a part of a, a, a design standard to say, well, we have trash receptacles, we have, uh, recycling receptacles, here's what they look like. Um, fair, fairly common, I would think, to have, and I think it's one of those things that we could work on. Doesn't have to be done February, it could be a, a working document. We've already started, uh, policy around, um, porta potty use or installments in parks. That's one of, one of those that you could also add to design use, and when, when they're in specific parks, when they're not, excuse me, um, same with, with parking lots, so just standardizing. Um, I know we had, uh, or you had, um, a resident come in and, and complain about a sign. I don't. Sign signs, I don't remember which park it was, but I.
Oh, I do.
I think it was a legitimate complaint, because I, I do think it's a very tall, uh, sign, I think it matches, but is it essential to have a, a sign that's, uh, in a, in a small park that's a giant, you know? Maybe it is, and maybe that's part of the di, design standard, so we can simply say to, to a citizen, or to staff, or to a, a commission member, well, here's what our standard says, so, that's where that's coming from.
You know, one thing that has kind of astonished me when, uh, I think three years ago when I first started and reading the reports, is how much time, uh, Public Works ends up spending on collecting all the trash from the many parks that we have, right? And, and, um, there are some fairly efficient, um, they're, they're, they're probably a little, what I would say is, uh, the capital costs to put them in are, um, a little higher than the regular trash cans or recycling cans, but there, there are some, and, and, and then getting them isn't, isn't your typical just a trash bag. It's a, it's a containment system that actually goes into the ground, and, um, how they work is they, they actually keep the trash cooler, cause it's in ground. So you don't get the smell or the, the stench of it, it keeps things contained better, so they don't overflow, and, but it's really, uh, a, a, a bag with a cinch on the bottom, has a big plastic liner inside. So really, you're only emptying these trash bags probably once a year, if that, uh, depending on the size of what you want. Um, but they need a, an arm lift to pull the bag out, unsinch the vinyl, and then you lay down this large trash bag on it, on the truck, and then take it to, uh, be disposed of. But, um, there are, and the other thing is, because it is below ground and you have the weight, it just compresses itself over time. There are some better ways to do our crash, our, our trash, uh, receptacles. Um, it just, it takes maybe a little bit more investment and maybe a long-term vision on something like that, but, you know, we could look into things like that, that, that would help overall and probably decrease parks going around every week to get the trash on, on our many parks that we have. Just a thought.
I'm just imagining the, the bag tearing, like, like the garbage bag coming out.
So is Marty right now. Marty's just like, what? What?
That's really interesting though.
So a question, man, maybe for staff and also for, Peter, you had mentioned this as well, in terms of the scale and scope for this, I fully agree with this as well. How much, how many of these things do we maybe still have right now in the city code as it is, just in various places? Like, we have parking in terms of the quantity for, for businesses, I mean, as how many they have to do when they're built. We have in the code parking for other uses, but how much do we already have in the code, and maybe it's just finding the different things and putting into a single document versus how much maybe would need to be newly developed items? For the design standards overall?
Well, I guess I can speak from, from my perspective on, on design standards relating to businesses don't apply to the city, from my personal experience. Um, that's my understanding, and I may, maybe not be, speaking out of turn, that, that's my, as a business, um, owner and, and looking into parking and, um, that, that was my, my understanding. But yes, we have science standards as well, but I don't know that they apply to the city. Someone correct me on that.
Do we, and we have other examples of other cities that have put forth similar design standards, just simply for the park level, so we're not necessarily reinventing the wheel? I, I, is it reasonable to presume those exist with other cities?
I've got a couple of copies, I think I have Dakota Counties, and I think I maybe have Oakdale's just as, as kind of reference points, yes, certainly there are.
Uh, the final change was just, um, park tree planting and moving that to a priority two versus, uh, we had that as a priority four. That came from, uh, Commissioner Pat as well. I don't think there's much more to add to that, besides maybe additional funding from, you know, it's not going to be a CIP item, it's likely just going to come from Public Works, their budget. But having that understanding of just providing, we are losing trees within our parks, we discussed that in full, not only is it the Emerald Ash Bore, but the oak wilt, things like that, but understanding of just placement of trees, making shade for future, for future use in our parks.
Yeah, and I talked with someone from the Tree Trust, I'm not sure if you're familiar with that, they're based in St. Paul. They have both a nonprofit and a for-profit. They train urban youth to be tree trimmers and so forth, so that's part of it. And the other part is helping cities to provide not only an urban cover, but even in the suburban parts. They work with cities, they have certain grants where you can get trees at a little bit over cost. I didn't go into it a lot, because I have no power, but it's something, they work with a lot of cities to develop urban forests, so to speak, but also pining not only on public land, but on private land. And actually, Commissioner Allen knows way more about this, she sent me some documents about tree cover, shade cover in our parks, and it's like abysmal. It's like some parks were like 2% shade cover. And so it's something that we could really look at, and I don't know if we'd want to draw in, you know, we could talk, you talked about having donations of trees or working hand in hand with something like Tree Trust to get people to help adopt trees in these years of drought. It's really important to have someone who's going to be watering it periodically, you know, whether it's like a Boy Scout, a Girl Scout group, or a neighborhood group, or something like that. But I think, again, you know, getting participation from our residents is just a huge way to have it be successful and to really have our parks look more like parks, have more tree cover.
I will gladly volunteer the Boy Scouts to help with that.
So did you say that was Minnesota Tree Trust?
It's just called Tree, I don't know if it has Minnesota in front, it's based in St. Paul. I went a tree through them once.
Well, years ago, when I moved into Carriage Station, there was, and maybe it was just, I mean, it was just a program, I think, through the DOT back when Manning, as it goes towards Stillwater, was a state highway. And I think we worked through the city to get some funding for trees along where the park is in our septic field, right? So, and it was all volunteers from the neighborhood, and we planted those trees back in like, I think, 2006. So if you drive by now, those trees are much taller and provide some screening from that area. I think you provide those opportunities for neighborhoods to do that, you'll find people that are willing to volunteer their time. And every time I drive by there, well, not every time, but usually I'd look at the trees and like, yeah, we planted those like, almost twenty years ago, right? And it's kind of cool.
I think on the public works side, that might be one of the hardest things that we can do, is like, we planted, the trees we planted at Lyons Park were in the fall, so we had the time and access to water there. Some of our parks, we wouldn't have that access to water, so we're at, you know, we're taking water up there. So planting a lot of those trees in the spring or early summer does take that water. I mean, we need a lot of water to them. And so putting that time and staff and, you know, equipment and trying to get water to them is probably one of our toughest parts with planting trees.
Not to get into operations, but doesn't the fire department have a water tender that can be pulled around and?
Training opportunity?
I don't know. Use what we got, right?
The last item on our work plan is the finance side. Update the capital improvement plan, we do that every year, around the June-July era, and provide a budget update as needed. So as staff will continue to provide the Parks Commission with where we're at financially as far as the Parks Funds, and review that with them on a monthly basis. One item that was brought up by the Parks Commission was to review and make recommendations regarding resources for city park management. Peter, if you wanted to talk about that one?
Unless anybody else wants to, I know we discussed that as a group, but I'm happy to, if anybody else. I can start. Yeah, this was a reflection of, well, two things, you know, we have the guidance from a Parks Commission. We're looking for guidance from City Council, which we're doing tonight, and I very much appreciate, I think, I will speak for all of us to say, I think we appreciate that greatly, to have that, the guidance as well as the advisory, the master plan update. And we're looking for that guidance. We also, I think, are well aware that we can come up with plans, all the ideas we want, but we have to figure out whether it's feasible, whether the money's there, whether the time and the staff are there. I think since I've been on the Park Commission, I've had the sense that the way we finance parks and the capital improvements to parks is most likely not sustainable. And I say that carefully, because I don't know that, but I suspect that. And I think it's worthwhile, and others can speak up as to how they, where they're coming from on this, because again, we put this on as a group. I think I initiated, but I think we're overdue to have an answer on that, whether that's sustainable. And, you know, for example, when we talk about parking, we talked about parking tonight. Parking lot for some of the lots we've talked about in the past have been 150 easy, which is not a lot of money. It is actually for the parks, though. That's a playground versus a parking lot. So when we talk about on this, you know, what are parking options for some of these parks, we simply can't answer that question with one, out knowing what the guidance is from the council, on what really we want, direction we want to go in our master plans, and two, whether we have the money to do it. Same with staff. I very much appreciate the work that's done, and this has nothing to do with anything regarding like, oh, people aren't doing their job, that's not for me to say. I do know that Adam in particular has not, I think this is maybe at best, a quarter of the work of his workload is working on park stuff, and simply could not do some of the things that even if we do have the budget for, is simply not going to be done. And so the question of, does it make more sense to have a city park director, which I believe the city did have in the past? Does it not? Again, I'm not necessarily advocating that there is, but I know that, my belief is it should be explored.
Why didn't we have a city parks director?
Well, it maybe wasn't a director, but it was a part, we had somebody that was in charge exclusively of the parks. I don't know. Marty, do you have?
Yeah, I can't give too many details to that, but they did kind of assign back when there was four or five people in the whole department. They kind of had their own areas. So we did have somebody that spent a lot of their focus on just parks.
And I agree with that. There's a sense of, and I don't want to speak too poorly, there's a sense of fragmentation in our overall park approach. A little bit, we have parks all over the place. And if we had some other kind of more centralized resources, funding, whatever, you might get a more centralized, coordinated plan. So that's another reason that you might want to look at this. And again, I think this also comes into fact with our growth and where we're going as a city, and those types of things that might be over the future, something that you might want to consider. And that's what I think we're talking about.
I think, isn't that part of what the Parks Plan Update should address? I mean, years ago, I'm, you know, probably happened before I moved in, eighteen years ago, but it seemed like every development was getting its own park. And I think over time that, at least from my point of view, that that's too much, at least for a city to really operate and maintain on a regular basis. So that more centralized, maybe parks that are, for lack of a better term, more regional to areas of the city, seem to make better sense. So you can maybe put the right amount of dollars to lesser parks and make them better, as opposed to a lot of dots on the map.
Yeah, I hope the plan does that, but we've had several plans over the years, and I don't know if it's really driven us that way.
So one thing that I know I've brought up over the last year, and I think Council Member Hearn may have as well, is is that long-range plan from a resource and cost perspective, so that we can start plotting out what it's going to cost us to maintain all the parks that we're installing? And to the mayor's point, do we condense parks? Do we do something different because we financially are not going to be able to sustain what we're building? And so I know that's something that's being worked on, is what does it look like, you know, ten, twenty years with what we're putting in? So I think we're going down that path. The other piece of that that I would bring out is, and maybe this is something for Administrator Schroeder, we've done a number of operational audits over the past few years on the different departments in the city. And so that looks at the resource needs and helps us plan forward what we're going to need to support that. And so I don't recall, and maybe Director Powers, you can speak to whether Public Works had that operational audit.
Next year.
Next year. So I would see that as something to look at as part of that operational audit to see if that is indeed a role that we're missing in our city, or how that would be structured. But that would be the appropriate avenue to go to really vet that. So I think you raising it now is a good point, and something that we should just keep on the radar for that operational audit.
Yeah, I think you raise an excellent point, because I think we can all project with some degree of certainty when the city will be done with large development. And you're going to get a, you know, you're not going to get these large cash infusions as parkland dedication fees, you know, so your capital will eventually end. And like you said, you're going to be stuck with maintenance at that point, which may be unsustainable. So we make proformas for utilities all the time. Here's where we're going to put these utilities in, here's the payments, here's our, we're going to do this, we can project out twenty years, what's going to happen. And I could foresee something along this over the next year, planning, generally scoping, how many more developments will the city have in the next fifteen years? Generally, is that going to bring in money? Then you guys can kind of decide, do we want to just spend on capital and then die on the vine afterwards, or conserve for replacement, which is going to be your real capital need in the next twenty years? So I agree.
I think this is where the change that you guys suggested for the first one, where it's review, make recommendations, and update Parks Master Plan nails it, because again, I think that is, personally, I find that to be priority number one. I think that's going to guide everything else. And I love the additional words of the review and make recommendations. I just feel like this year with that Parks Planning Group, and I know that their, the plan was that they were going to do some sessions with the Parks Commission, some with the council. I don't know if, I can't remember if one of you guys are representing that group as well. So I just think it's such a great opportunity to hit on all of these points that are all these items on here, to get them all worked into that Parks Master Plan in a way that is holistic, and it's taking into the, it's taking in consideration the big picture. As a side note, and, you know, like, one thing that I learned last year going through this process was, it was a little frustrating doing this meeting, and then later in the month, we did, the council had our meeting where we set some of our priorities as well. And I did not carry over enough what we did from the Parks meeting, this meeting like we did last year, into that annual meeting where we're setting our objectives as a council. And I think one of the lessons that I learned is, I really do want to take these high priority, you know, one or two of these high priority items that you guys recommended, which are great recommendations, and really push that that turns into also a council directive. You know, same thing with the Planning Commission. I think, I know I've talked with Commissioner Kessler about this too, where, you know, would it make more sense to actually do it reverse, where we have the council meeting first and come up with some directives? I don't know if that's right, though, because I think you guys brought up great points that we wouldn't have thought about in that meeting first. And I think bringing what you're saying here today to that meeting is something that I really want to focus on, and I do feel strongly about that first one.
Could I comment on? Well, I appreciate that. And again, I appreciate the guidance from staff and from the council to know, so we're not operating on an island. I would really, I would really hope that we would continue, that point of picking that up as a council item, I think would be spectacular. One of the things that I'm a little afraid of is that we end up with a Parks Master Plan that ends like the last one, which is, it sits there. And actually, I was really surprised to have my cohorts, I'm on that advisory committee that brought that up separate. They said, you know, why are we doing this? Which is a great question, you know, why are we doing this? A constructive why, why are we doing this? And how are we going to implement it? Which I was like, all right, good, I've got some good folks here, because that's the question. And I really look forward to, hopefully, to the council pushing some of this stuff, whether, I think you could be ahead of the master plan and the mass, I mean, really pushing, ultimately, it's the citizens of Lake Elmo, and they voted you to do this. So you can push this agenda so we know what direction we're going. I think that, even on those individual items of, hey, we've got DeMontreville Park, the park equipment needs replacing, or does it? Are we, do we have a large central play facility that everybody can gather at? You know, those are, we need that guidance from council, and I appreciate it a lot.
That makes me think, like, for next year, too, you know, this year, if we can review, make recommendations, or you guys review, make recommendations, update the parks, approve ideally, next year, it's implement, right? Because I totally agree, I'd hate to go through this whole process and then not use it. I mean, it's a lot of work and thought and cost put into that, and it's what the community wants, based off of all that work that was done. So it's like, it needs to be implemented. So I think, you know, hopefully next year, probably should write that down, to make that a priority of implement the Parks Master Plan.
Well, I will say, in terms of the budget concern, I think you're probably preaching to the choir as well. I fully agree with that. And I, to Administrator Schroeder's point, I see this as similar to a pro forma with our utilities. We know there are future costs, and we know that there are revenue streams that have to be taken into account. In this case, the revenue is going to go down. We're going to continue to grow, and we're going to keep having new developments, but the rate is going to go down. And so that is, that is an imminent concern, even if we're fully funding and doing everything for the parks right now that we can, which, what I'm hearing feedback from residents and from yourselves is, there are always things that we can continue to enhance and improve. So to me, as we move into the Parks Master Plan, I could see it similar to our comp plan, where there's a phasing approach. There's the finance aspect of it, and we're going to have to have that conversation as well, but there's going to be a phasing approach. Similar to this, it'll have to be prioritized, like which thing is first, which thing is second, because there are also some things that can't be first, based upon the type of amenity or service or improvement that it is. But in terms of finance, yes, I fully, fully concur. It's going to be ten, fifteen years from now. It might be similar to what we do with the vehicle replacement fund. Like, we might just have to start dedicating a stream that we're putting into it, no matter what, because the current stream is going to dry up. Were my comments that bad? Geez.
I'm nodding in affirmative.
Dead silence.
I'm just saying things that everybody already said. You're just saying things that everybody already said.
So moving on.
So that does complete our work plan for, that we put together for 2024. Are there any additional comments on any of the items that we have in any of the four topics?
Yes, the ball fields. Is that just going to be the next item?
Oh, yeah, we'll go on to the those other four items. Yep. You want to do that first?
Pass it over to me. Yeah. All right. So I do have an update on the pinwheel parcel search. Staff identified eight parcels that meet the ball field criteria that we discussed on October 10 at the City Council Workshop. Letters were sent to property owners on December 22 with a response deadline of January 19. To date, we've had two property owners submit interest in future conversations with the city. Next steps after the January 19 deadline would be a closed session with City Council to discuss properties and purchase negotiations. We then want to negotiate and close on a property, and then the Parks Commission would review that for future amenities and layout.
Okay.
With that, I can stand for any questions.
I would caution us not to talk about any specifics at this point, as anytime you're talking about the real estate type of thing, you would have that in closed session to discuss on the costs and things like that. So I'd just like to keep mum on the two that have responded at least.
And just for clarification, I did check with legal. When we entered closed session, as you all know, cities are highly regulated for what you can talk about in closed session. And the details, according to legal, is we would say entering into closed session to discuss possible negotiations for these properties, and you would basically list the PIDs.
Yeah.
So that would be what would happen.
So with that timeline, this would be our last opportunity to get direct feedback from the Parks Commission at the high level for pinwheel feedback. Because obviously, we're not going to discuss the possible properties to begin with. But in terms of ideas, feedback that we would consider then during a possible closed session, this would be an opportunity to gain feedback or ideas.
Well, we certainly could work through the Parks Commission meetings. And as a representative of staff, Mr. Swannapole could present to councils. So not directly, but indirectly.
My intention is is to have Adam in the closed session
Yep.
to help give guidance to you as you decide where you want to go. And he's the most educated one in the room on this particular issue. So I would certainly have him at the table.
Councilmember Beckstrom.
So just to clarify the process here, so I'm understanding it. So we've got the master plan for the parks being developed. And as part of that, assessing needs from different sports entities, et cetera. And so if I recall, looking for land, and we we set the criteria so that it would allow us to modify that, should we get different answers back from the master plan, correct? So we're talking about a pinwheel, but if, for whatever reason, that's not supported in the master plan, then the criteria we developed to find the property would still allow us to move forward?
No, because the the dollars that were dedicated for that were for ball fields. So they would have to be used in some other manner, shape, or form.
But the property, we're talking about a pinwheel, but we could still have ball fields on the property.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I'm trying to get at. Yeah, just a different layout.
Layout. Okay, yeah, gotcha.
Should we find find out that, you know, if there's really more interest in having soccer, but yes, we still need baseball. So the design of it will will come. But we found property that meets the criteria that we developed as a council before. So again, I'm just kind of maybe just talking out loud what the process was around this.
I'm going to bring up, so from your your guys' the commission meeting, you brought up about the the schools. And I thought that was a really interesting thought about potentially partnering with elementary school. If I remember right, you know, again, I don't know if that's going to move forward or not. But, you know, I think that's a, it was an interesting idea to explore. I mean, I think in their plan, they had baseball field in the drawing. I thought they had quite a bit of area. You brought up about, well, what about with the the old school? If they do demolish that? Again, I don't, I'm overstepping here with anything I'm saying. Let me know. I just thought that was an interesting concept. So again, with the idea of, I still am really in full support of that first one of the Parks Master Plan being such a top priority. I don't want to sit on that million dollars and and have it depreciate either, though. You know, so I guess my thought is tonight, if we could work together to figure out, like, is that, to ensure that that is really something that we do want, having that is, because we would purchase this land, and then that would be with the master's plan, hey, like, we have this land, we need to do something with it. I think I just want to make sure everyone's on board with that. But also, maybe hear from you guys more on your idea with the school. I thought that was a good idea.
The schools, one. The other one, when we went through and talked about the original set of proposals that we got entrance, staff got interest from other communities' baseball programs of coming in and using ours facilities. Now, normally, you might say, well, no, we we wouldn't do that. But I think it was Oakdale was coming to us and wanted to look at that. So the point you're making is there are a lot of potential strategic leverages we could use in this simple thing of building the pinwheel, okay? There could be other avenues and other sources of resources that could be involved in that. But the schools is another one of those, and I think there's other organizations.
And was there, I mean, did anyone have any communication with anyone from the school on that? Right. Maybe it was that had some experience with that?
So I, in my other, my full-time job, I do manage a pinwheel with ball fields on multipurpose. It was built by the city. It is managed and operated operated by the school district, by my staff. So we generate revenue by renting it to the specific softball field, softball groups, the baseball groups, the adult groups. So if we're going to set forth and put all this funds forward, I mean, we already put a strain on the city budget for all these parks. Now, this one can be a very large one as well. If we're going to put four fields together, a pinwheel, and and where do you go with it? And who are we catering to? So that's why I brought up if we partner with the school district, because if they're going to take down the elementary school and potentially that ball field, I know we obviously know Lake Elmo Baseball has a large interest in this. Does VAA have a large interest in this? Who else does? You know, we're not a city that does programming, but we know people that do programming. So we we need to get their input as well. We don't want to build this really nice four-plex pinwheel facility and have it sit there and grow weeds. We want it used. We need to find out, you know, what are the needs of a school district? If we don't need a pinwheel, we shouldn't build a pinwheel. Maybe it's two, maybe it's two baseball fields, you know, and it's a multipurpose field for soccer, lacrosse, football, some of these other open spaces for kids to run and do something else. So we need to make sure we're catering to the right group of people when we build this and do it the right way. Don't overstep our boundaries with what we're doing. Parking is a big consideration in multiple parks. And if you get into one of these, and you end up having a baseball tournament, a softball tournament, and a lot of this stuff happens in the fall, when kids go back into school in August, do we have the parking for this? And, you know, there's a percentage of parking spots that have to have handicap parking. Now, if you build this, what is one of the larger areas that this city probably needs more of? Now, you maybe need to add another set of pickleball courts, sand volleyball courts. We need to make sure if we're going to build this, we have a good plan ahead, and we're catering to the whole city when we do this, if this is going to be a city park. So a lot more has to go into than than just, you know, we use the pinwheel as a phrase, but maybe this needs to be more of a multipurpose park in what we're getting into. So we just, we just, it just doesn't sit there in dead use.
And I guess when I hear that, I know when we came up with this search criteria, the the acreage that we listed as the required amount of acreage, the minimum acreage, it's, I think it surprised myself at first, because, you know, they gave us the numbers on you need X numbers of acres for a baseball field, X number for a football field, and the math didn't add up. But they, the staff was thinking ahead on, I think, a lot of those issues with the water reuse, the parking, a possibly little playground for the siblings that are watching the games. After hearing that, again, I, I'm just trying to wrap my head around of like, if we can work together to have that idea of what we want to do and work on moving forward, it sounds like maybe the school might not be the best option, because then we might be beholden to what they want done with it versus we're going to do this master plan, figure out what people want in the community. And if we have the land, then we can act on that. But without the land, we can't act on it.
Yeah. I guess I would see it as if the school chooses to offer ball fields that are non-competition level and just adds the supply for practice fields, for T-ball for that, awesome, more power to them if that's what their offer or design is. Obviously, we're not at that stage. But I I appreciate the feedback on that. I would hope and expect that if we get to this stage, that we are looking at the revenue stream. We're not doing this to be a charity, like, this is for rentals for groups. So I would fully expect that we're, and obviously, we rent right now as it is. So are are rates similar to what is charged elsewhere, like elsewhere? Do we know what other cities do for rental rates?
Rebecca does her rentals.
Other cities charge a lot more, but they also have nicer facilities.
And is the offer from Hill Mary still on the table as well?
I haven't spoke to Mike in, for several months on that topic.
Well, the other thing, I mean, we got to remember is that we have three school districts here. There's, you know, while 834 is the largest of our city, we still have two other school districts that, you know, when you think about areas and, I don't know, other opportunities for, and everything gets congested. People are looking for places to perform their practices and their competitions and whatever. So that, yeah, that's something that needs to be considered as well.
And I would, I would stress, too, that the the master plan should drive, that's our community feedback. That's why we are spending the money doing that, to get the community voice in what they want. We know we need to put baseball, but what in addition to baseball? And as you said, is it more multi-multi-use fields, which I think was the path that we were encouraging when we talked about the criteria and needing more acreage than than what was originally planned for just baseball? So again, I'd like to see that really be the driver to what what gets developed.
So question on that pinwheel that that you have, what are the other amenities that are at that pinwheel or other pinwheels that you have direct experience with?
I mean, ours is we have a small concession stand. It's a light, it's a lighthouse tower basic. So it's a dual level. We have our softball association has the upstairs to do tournaments. Their office is up there, and then down below, half of it is concession stand and restrooms. The other half is where we have the dragging equipment, and our maintenance equipment is in there as well. And then we also have, which is kind of an eyesore, but we have a container on the other end to put in the lacrosse nets, the extra soccer nets, things like that, that we just didn't account for at the time, because lacrosse all of a sudden made a huge boom in the last how many years? So you did triple the amount of that, the amount of lacrosse nets, and you had to double the amount of soccer nets, because soccer got large as well. It's amazing what COVID did for outdoor sports. It just absolutely exploded. So it's those things that you have to take into account for storage.
Gotcha.
But, yeah, that was, that's basically our amenities. And we still use the the portable toilets on the outside between the parking lot and the entrance into the pinwheel, just to make it easier. Not much different than, you know, Lucy Winton Bell has the same thing with their pinwheel. They've got the small concession stand. Their equipment is in the garage behind it, because they use theirs for football. Their outfield's in the fall, get used all for all our football stuff. And they host, they have portable goalposts and all that are all stored in that garage, along with their mowing equipment.
I helped put those goalposts together.
You know, the big thing to partner with the school district, a school district or somebody else's, the assistance of maintenance. You know, you can, you can deflect some of the, you know, it's the, it's the, it's the true greens. It's the lining. It's that stuff. And after the time, you get the dress, the nasty hump from the grass to the infield ag line that needs to be hosed down every few years. Otherwise, that's a nasty, it's a nasty hump, and it can hurt a lot of kids ankles.
Good input. Thank you.
So just to clarify the timing on, so the the deadline is the 19th of January?
Correct.
And we're targeting when for a potential closed session?
February 6.
Thank you.
Have you been approached at all by the group that's been working for decades to get a community center and swimming pool and to partner with something like this to share parking space and whatnot?
I have been contacted via email a while ago. And to be completely honest, given the things that we have ongoing in the city, I haven't. I don't think I can stretch myself any thinner. And I know that that's, I always thought it was strange that a community in the area of Stillwater didn't have an outdoor pool. And, you know, I grew up in a town of 2,300, and we did. So, but, yeah.
Since we are talking about it, and it keeps being brought up on each one of those topics, I'll give you an update of where we're at on our Parks Master Plan. So just stepping back a little bit, on October 5, we had our Parks, we had our kickoff with staff, Public Works staff as well as planning and the city administrator. Talked with our contractor, Bolton and Mink, and got things rolling. We've held bi-weekly meetings, if not weekly meetings, with Bolton and Mink's staff. Anna and her staff have over there been providing updates on a weekly basis. On November 15, we had our first Parks Advisory Meeting that consists of 10 members within the community as well as our Parks Commission advisor. And we conducted a SWOT exercise. And so we listed off the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats that that our parks and trail system poses to our to our city. At that time, the survey went live that day as well, and so that survey remains open until Monday. So we encourage everybody to provide their input at this time, because that's what we're going to lead the next 10 years with and continue to, continue to look back at when we do look at this plan as for guidance. So on December 2, we did have our Light Up Lake Elmo event that did bring in over 400 people in the library that day. We had a representative there, Pat, from the commission, helped us out there, as well as the Bolton and Mink staff there. So just a quick rendering on where we're at with that. We do sit in that, the review, the needs and assessment aspect in January here. We're probably tilted a little, a month off probably yet, with it finally, with it coming to a completion probably at the end of June, July. So, but again, that survey is really important, and that survey continues until Monday. So.
Can I just quick ask, how are we looking for the survey for respondents?
Last Friday, we, she posted, we had about 250 around that area?
Yeah, I think we're doing better than the last surveys we've posted.
Okay.
I think that was the last time or something like that. Yeah.
Yeah, there's a QR code in the Friday email that went out, or I just saw a QR code on like the Facebook page. And I think having it at the Light Up Lake Elmo, I walked in there, and it was really packed. It was good to see people there. Certainly, maybe that's an opportunity for another, I just happened to take a look and see who might have Instagram accounts. Most of our neighbors do have that opportunity. But that would also reach quite a few people. But. Councilmember Beckstrom.
So one of the current concerns that I had with all of the the master plan options we had was was the dependence on online information and online surveys. And so how, is this the only, so I know you've got your Light Up Lake Elmo. Was that a, did you do a paper survey or gather feedback? So that was a paper? Do we have other plans for paper surveys, or is it strictly online? Because again, that's my concern, and I think 200 out of, you know, 11,000 residents isn't necessarily a great response or representative.
Did you go back to the previous slide, Adam? There. So it looks like there's a, oops. Yeah, slide nine there. So stakeholder listening session?
So, yeah, those will come up at our pop-up events. So those will be at, so we do have a one plan for our Easter, around the Easter time, with our So those will be at, so we do have a, one plan for our Easter, around the Easter time with our J.C.'s? Not J.C.'s, what's the other?
Yeah, J.C.'s usually, those are the lions.
Yep, so that's our potential pop-up event for our listening session with, with our updates and where we kind of sit with that, so.
And then Arbor Day Tree giveaway?
So that was the, another one that they plan to attend, just to provide feedback and get feedback from citizens. Cause we did have a really good turnout last year at that event.
Right. Do you have some other suggestions?
No, I, I know that that's something that we've just been challenged with, with being able to get robust feedback from the community. And I think everyone is challenged with just relying on online. And so I don't know, who, who are we using Bolton Mink for this one? I mean, if there's a way, and I don't know that there's any, anything coming up, but I really would love to get more non-online survey feedback. Cause I, I don't know that, I don't know that we're gonna get a great response or the feedback we need.
Bay Township is doing a survey to determine the citizens' wish to become a city or not. I'm sure you've all read about that.
Yeah.
We basically sent out a postcard to seven hundred and forty-three households and we got four hundred and fifty responses. I mean, we got a really good response. So that postcard though, had the QR code on it and plus a short little verbiage of what is the township asking?
I think a mailing, if I remember correctly, within five-five-zero-four-two, depending on the size of it's gonna run twenty-eight, maybe three, well, it's gonna be more now because their population's gone up, but it's, do you know the number Rebecca?
I don't, but postcards are a lot more cheaper than.
Yeah, so you know, even something a little bit bigger, I think, at the time ran me like twenty-eight hundred dollars. But Bolton Mink has a pretty robust like marketing group that has, does really good jobs. I know that when we're trying to get state bonding for CAS seventeen, Lake Elmo Avenue and thirty-six, they had a really slick card that they gave to the bonding reviewers that basically, you know, they could hand them this card and all they had to do was open it up and the video was on the card of Sheriff Starry, the fire department, the other people involved in that, trying to, you know, let these guys know why the funding is so important. So if it's even a, a mail distribution, I, I don't think that's outside the realms of the budget for, to get that word out. Maybe it's the QR code on a mailing thing so people can just do it that way.
And you said that's what, it wasn't, it wasn't a postcard with a survey, it was a postcard with a QR code?
Yeah, postcard with a QR code, so it was still, it was still electronic.
Yeah.
And then that went in and Baytown actually utilized Augsburg College, an MBA program with a bunch of guys doing this as part of a class project. So I mean, it was relatively inexpensive for them to produce this.
When's our next mailing? We do a.
We have until later, it's in the summer.
So, so if we were to do some sort of survey with regards to a postcard, you know, the QR code wouldn't be a bad idea. Obviously, sending out like an actual survey would be, I think, just a complete waste of money, nobody would do it.
Right.
But how, what, right now, there was the survey that went out the other day with the two hundred people. How are people accessing that QR code through a website?
Well, I think that's been sent, I can't remember exactly, but it's been, it's on our, it's on the city website now. It's on, what I saw it come through on Facebook posting that Julie did.
In the Fresh, yep.
And the Fresh Weekly that goes up Friday in an email to people that have signed up.
It's at Parks.
What's that?
It's at Parks.
It's at Parks?
Yeah, and it's here, it's physically put up.
I mean, I wouldn't doubt that maybe the QR code sent out by the postcard would do a little better than that. But I, I mean, I'm not thinking we're gonna get too much more than the two hundred anyways if we did that. I mean, I figure, not, not to bring it back, I feel like everything comes back to the Instagram thing. But I mean, if you have, City of Lake Elmo's got eleven thousand people, however many have Instagram, not all of them's gonna follow it. But let's say you have a thousand followers and you have an Instagram story that says, I mean, it's not gonna be a twenty, I just looked at the survey, like, survey like twenty questions, but just like a question, I don't know, is Pebble Park better than Clydes Park? Just something, but like, like you would get quite a few responses. I mean, much more than, than this postcard that we're arguing about would, would have. I mean, as far as the data of like four hundred people out of eight hundred or whatnot with the Baytown thing, I mean, that's, that's different data because that's something that's pretty important, I mean, becoming a city. But not to bring it back to that again, but I just, I don't think that we're gonna be spending our, even if it might be cheap, spending our resources in the right area with the postcard thing when it could be a lot easier and more efficient to just have a bigger social media presence.
Sure.
I probably would disagree with that. And I certainly appreciate your perspective and, and it's one that, that assumes people are on social media. I think a good portion of people are not on, on our social media networks. And so, and that may be what's driving the success in Baytown is if you're getting it in your mailbox and there's a QR code, you don't have to be on a social media platform to access that, you just got your QR code. And I think most people with a smartphone have done that in restaurants to get your menu. But my experience in, in surveys is having multiple formats is gonna get you a greater response. So I would encourage, from my standpoint, I think it's worth the investment to do a postcard to reach the mailboxes of, of everyone in the city, the taxpayers in the city and not depend on social media. But, but maybe something on the postcard can refer them to the social media so we can get more people on our Instagram page or Facebook page.
Be some information to get more information, right?
Yeah.
You know, go here, some web link or whatever. But yeah, I mean, to both your points, being a Gen Xer, right? Kind of stuck in the middle between baby boomers, Gen Y, I'm kind of like, I'm probably using twenty-five percent of the capability of this thing, you know? Usually it's a paperweight, but I know some, I've gotten a lot of comments from residents, you know, generally of the, the people that are a little older than myself, say, I don't, I'm not on social media. I know, but most of them have one of these and if they don't, they haven't done it before, they have a kid or grandkid that'd be more than happy to show them how to do it too, if they're so inclined to participate in the survey.
How many member, how many emails are in the Fresh for our list right now? Like ballpark, two, three thousand?
I'm not sure, that is something that you.
I didn't think it was that high.
Really?
I didn't think, but I thought it was a metric we were looking at, but I could be wrong. But I, I think the online survey and a, a postcard is an and strategy, so it's not one, one or the other, but both.
Just, so one more thought on this is, and even, I think even if we do get a good result from either of those or both of them, I still don't think we're gonna get to, you know, fifty percent engagement. And I don't know if there's a certain number where all of a sudden we say, oh, great, and okay, now we feel like there's enough. You know, going back to, there was this park plan that we already had, but it hasn't been implemented. I think a lot of times we reference these survey numbers and we say, oh, well, there's only twenty people that said they want a volleyball court. So I don't know if that really is, if, if this, if this plan is legitimate. So I guess, again, this is my perspective on this is I, I find that this survey is really good input. But then I think either way, I don't think we're ever gonna get to a point where we say, yep, that's statistically enough. We're gonna have to be the leaders and, and take that input and, and make the decision. So I just wanna put that out there ahead of time of like, you know, whatever comes from that, I wanna use it as the suggestions and the thoughts from the community, but I, I don't wanna just have a plan that we don't implement. So I think we're still gonna just have to make decisions knowing we're probably not going to get statistically enough. But that doesn't mean let's not push for it, let's get as much input as we can.
Well, literature says that if you can get a thirty percent response on surveys, that's good. So I would agree.
That's a good metric.
I don't think we're gonna get, we're not gonna get the Baytown response on this. But, but based on, on statistics and metrics and all that good jazz, a thirty percent response rate should give you a good picture and I would hope that we could get that.
And say we can't, you know, then that's where I just, I feel like, cause I would hate to get into that same situation where we don't act on anything because we didn't get to thirty percent. And no matter what we do, we're not gonna get to thirty percent, but people still want these things and we still need to do them as a city to have these amenities. So I just wanna put that out there that, you know, before we get to that point, like that is my thought process on it.
I get it, totally.
You know, one of the things you could do, we have relationships with our current developments. Most of the current developments all have HOAs, all of the HOAs have some sort of communication with their homeowners. Maybe, I mean, would we be able to get a list of HOAs in our city?
We have one. We have the, the contacts for them, so.
We can maybe just reach out to all and say, hey, can you share this on your Instagram or send it on an email to your contacts? Cause I guarantee you the people who live in these developments read the email from their HOA. I don't know, something to think about.
Similar avenue.
I did do exactly that too, about five, I would say a limited number. Only, the only reason why it would set me back a little bit is some of our HOAs are run by partner companies. It was like Thirty-third Management Company or whatever. So it's hard to get that, that leader, the, that president or treasurer or whatever of that HOA, their email because everything always goes to that management company.
It's more difficult than they say.
Yeah, so the ones that we normally have contact with on a regular basis, Paul Gork's director and I, in regards to irrigation and land and things like that, those, those contacts we kind of try to keep a hold of just to send a few things like that out, so.
So Adam is, are they posted, like, I can't remember, there's one in the library, I believe.
Right.
But how about like the coffee shop or the barber shop, things like that?
Uh, that I'm not, that I didn't personally go to, like the Sally Manzera Center, there's one there as well. Just, you know, places that we, that a lot of our parkgoers would end up at, so.
I would guess if we had them, had some businesses, they would be willing to, whether it's down there off of North Hudson Boulevard or in the old Village area. I can't think of any that would just say outright, no.
All in the gas station, quick trip, quick trip. I mean, that's a daily flow of peoples, including for chicken for supper every day. But like, there are, there are opportunities. I mean, coffee shop, we, I'll, I'll go to the coffee shop tomorrow with a printout. Like, every opportunity is an additional source. I know the coffee shop right now, on the wall, they have a bunch of advertisements for this service, this service. Obviously, they're already, already using that, but yeah, I think that's a great idea. I'm not gonna wade into the aspect of what's a good number, but sure, if there are additional opportunities, why not?
Let's just try and explore some of those. I, I, I would talk to Ann from Bolton and Mink, they, they can do something that's not too complicated. And if there's an appetite from the Parks Commission to do that, that's a suggestion from council.
And the last one on our agenda, is there any other park commission goals that we should be looking at for twenty twenty-four?
Just get tabling and pebble courts done and opened up and ready to go?
Yes. Where are we on the, the soundproofing aspect? What was gonna be the timeline for the wait and see for the, for that? How much time were we gonna wait before determining?
We're just gonna kind of wait to see if we had complaints and then we come up with options at that point. Is that okay?
Yeah, I think that's, well, we, we should have Plan B at least acknowledged and so that we can act more quickly than not.
And I think when we talked about that too, having certain, some sort of ordinance or guidance on when we would install soundproofing and would be helpful too, just so we're, we're applying that consistency consistently across the city.
You all have the floor. Go ahead.
Please.
Well, the one thing I was gonna point out, and I've made this point to the plan development team is that when Lake Elmo School goes away, one of the best handicapped playgrounds in the county, if not, yeah, it's pretty nice. Goes away or at least moves south for a while, I don't know what the plans are. I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that that was something that would definitely happen. And so maybe somewhere in our planning down the road, that'd be something, if it's not, there's no saying that they would recreate that at their new location. But it would be a, a loss to the community.
I had a meeting with the school district, not this past week, week before, and I asked that specific question. And they're like, yeah, when they move the school, no matter where they move the school, they're taking it with, so.
Just a question for you guys. So I was talking about this, I don't know, maybe it was June, around the, the capital improvement plan times when we were talking about this. Out of all the parks, we have the playgrounds, everything, you know, we have a mountain bike park or, yeah, trails, you know, we have playgrounds, a lot of playgrounds. And the one thing I feel like we're lacking that I brought up was kind of this, what he was talking about earlier, the kind of fitness park aspect. When I had brought it up, it was right after walking down a beach somewhere, right? And, and I, I saw like this, they're called like, you know, the Calisthenics Park, where it's all these young, you know, people from like Barcelona Venice Beach, California, like doing their, their gymnastics almost routines and, and more fitness. It doesn't have to be like that necessarily, but I, I just, I wonder if investing in maybe more fitness style adult playgrounds maybe put one in the center of the city or at some park, I don't know if that would be a good investment. I mean, I, I talked to, was it Burke or, or Flag? One of those recreational, you know, I spoke with a lady by email and I also met with her. And I, I mean, I think that would be thirty thousand dollars, so it would be on this capital improvement plan. But I mean, for, for diversifying our parks, I wanna say, I feel like maybe it might be worth a little bit of money, I don't know.
That's not a, that's not a new thing, like a, like a kind of a circuit training thing where people have places and they have a sit-up bench that you can somehow move up or down or like step climbers, you know, that are static or pull-up bars and things like that. I found out how unfit I was back in my twenties trying to do one of those, right? That was thirty something years ago, so. Yeah, I, I don't, I don't think those are, I think that's a good idea. And bring some diversity and, and they're typically not maintenance onerous. They're pretty sturdy for a long time and made out of good quality material.
I think the one thing that I had raised in our last meeting, the commission's last meeting and kind of withdrew, but I'll bring it up, is the idea of exploring ways to, to strengthen planning around parks that may be developed in the future. And as I say this, we say, well, we're gonna have a master parks plan, so we have to wait on that. But we do have, we have our map now that says, hey, here's, here's where some parks should be. In fact, we have the, the ma, the complex, the, the pinwheel sports complex zone area, which I think is probably, that ship has sailed, that's why you're exploring other areas outside of the downtown because there's just not that, that space anymore. Point being is I, it seems to me, since I've been on this commission, that we wait for developers to purchase land to develop, which makes sense to a degree. But then we also wait for them to design their development and assign open space for potential parks. And it gets to the Parks Commission at, maybe at that time with a designated parks plan assigned by the developers. And I think that's a little bit backwards, I think, as far as if we wanna prioritize parks. I, I would hope we could explore ways to proactively plan. And this isn't identifying specific parcels necessarily to say, I wanna buy, you know, we wanna buy these, these parcels now, but to anticipate when this is developed, this is land, our, our comp plan lists that. Our, our comp plan lists that we're gonna protect, um, or, or conserve nat- nature spaces uh, and parkland, that's important, but we, we just have to be proactive about that and, and I eventually, maybe it's not this work plan, but in future work plans, would like to try and establish some sort of method, some sort of practice of proactively identifying parkland. I feel like this is gonna be one of those comments that sits there in silence afterwards.
Cause many communities do something similar both for parks and then also for other public services such as schools. I mean, they'll identify the land fifteen years before the development is built and they know where the school is planned before the school is even considering buying the land. Like, it's just a part of that, that pre-thought. But I think they put into their comp plan as well to say, yes, this specific aspect is indeed future zone for parks, but fully, fully agree on it.
I think the other, can I, can I help out with this, just a different thought, is, is that, you know, Lake Elmo's always been um, development pays for development, so the city has kind of developed as the developer wants it to go, right? And so, there's kind of this mind shift difference about maybe the city takes a look at some of the areas, as you're saying, pre-planning, doing that, but maybe you build a road where you want the road, not where the developer wants the road, and then you can better predict where those developments are going, now that's a, that's a, that's a complete different viewpoint from developer paying for development, right? But if you put in, you, then you put in your water lines and your sewer lines or whatever you have where you need them, not where the developer's gonna dictate, so that's a, that's like a one-eighty from what we've been doing.
Yeah, it'd be a whole mindset change concerning how you finance, you're gonna bond for utilities, corridors and roads, put it in and then you stage the development. To a certain extent, it makes more sense from a utility standpoint, cause we're not having pockets of water that need to go somewhere. We don't have sewer that needs to go way out here, there's nothing in between it. It's, it'd be a big change for the city to do that. I think one of the things that you as a, as a Parks Commission can do is work with our onboarding of our Community Development Director and our planning staff, cause normally what happens is these people come in with a concept. And they basically will work with staff for, you know, conceivably months. Giving comments, where they at, does this fit zone, does this density, where, you know, before these guys put hard money into a preliminary. And then, of course, they come to, you know, this body, the City Council, in, in the concept to say, hey, what does this look like? They get feedback from you at that period, fire, engineering, all those different things. You know, so I mean, that early, early concept where they're just putting it on a sheet of paper and a napkin. Really, we, you know, we should rely on community development to carry your master plan, your thoughts of what you want. If you guys are like, we want money, then planning's gonna know that, um, even if they want parks, you know. Or if you want parks in a certain area, when a development pops up, these guys are gonna know it. They just have to follow what you are wishing.
Yeah, well, I think that art- articulates the, the process that I would, and, and basically seeking. Um, I think, again, we have a comp plan that outlines some big rings of parks, but we, as a commission, aren't on the front end of saying, I can think of the Shilken property in, in specific. It came to us when it was already said and done as far as the layout of that, that development. When we asked, um, the recommendation was take cash and we said, well, if we took the land, where would it be? It wasn't even designated, nor was, I mean, there wasn't a spot for it necessarily, it was something we had to sort of walk back a bit. Um, so if we did that on the front end, that, that's the process I think I'm asking for, is to be involved somehow on the, the, the front end and I think, I think we probably just need help with being able to uh, put ourselves into that process.
Don't take the silence as a bad thing.
Yeah, I fully agree. No, I'm with you.
Anything else?
I don't have anything remaining.
Last year when we met, we, the previous month, we had gone through our list of prioritizing things and we had decided to downgrade the dog parks and then we met with you, you guys had the workshop with the council and a number of you mentioned it, and so we flipped and now we're going to have the dog park open in a few months. Is there anything that you guys are looking for again, like, you think we should be looking at?
Honestly, if I were to throw something out, I've mentioned it for a couple of years, I don't understand as a town that we have, the history that we do, the pride that we do in our community, we so many other small towns, when I go there, I will see something similar, we don't have, you know, a memorial. If, a veterans place, a place with a flag, with the plaque, with some type of activity. It, it can be a very small space, it can be a large space, it can be connected to a, the supersized playground down the road, but whatever, we don't have that type of a plaza. And I, it's always confused me, cause I know we have a tremendous volume of people from this community who have been veterans, many who have died in service. And I've, I've never understood how we don't have that. And I, I just, I would throw it out there as to, would that be something to consider as a priority? Obviously, we, there are so many things that we could do for various assets and things for uh, the community, but to me, that is one that hits home with everyone.
The, the, I like that idea, the, the one thing that doesn't really stick with me is the DeMonteville, so where's the DeMonteville Wildlife Park, it's not the actual park itself.
It's really difficult to get to.
Yeah.
I, I walked it and it's, it's hard to walk and I ended up being in neighbor's yards. Part of it is because they're, they're doing some, tearing down some trees or, or clearing underneath the power lines. And the sign, sign, Adam had said the signs will go up when they're done with that, but.
You say, I'm Park Commissioner, I'm just doing an audit, no worries.
Mayor, it's just sort of north of the uh, the ballpark.
I'm trying to go through these wonderful maps that uh, Ms. Sofia had put up online.
If you go to the parking lot for a Gateway Trail, just south of thirty-six.
Okay.
You can.
Acres, there's a pond and a.
There's a trailhead down by the lake.
But you can't park down there.
Yeah, I know, no, but there is a sign.
There is, there is.
There's a parking, yeah, parking area above of uh.
So I just, I just question that being a, does, is, is it, does it connect to, crap. Does it connect anything, it doesn't?
Greenway Trail.
The Gateway. It does, does Gateway have, do they groom that for cross-country or anything?
No.
Lot of time on that, yeah.
Do they groom it, actually?
They don't groom it.
They don't groom it?
No, Pete Hagberg, Hagstrom grooms it north of twelve on his own, but otherwise it's not. People use it for biking and walking.
Yeah.
If people ski on it to make it, the walkers will come and walk on the tracks.
Yeah.
You can't ski.
That just seems to me like it's maybe out of line with what we focus any attention on. I, I like that we have Reed Park that's got some space and obviously Sunfish, um, you know, we've is there any separation between the snow shoeing and the, cause there's been comments about the snow shoeing and the skiing, right? Being a little at odds.
And the bikers.
Skiing, I think was the big one too.
Was that it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the walkers and the dogs.
I don't know, that was the only thing kinda struck me as maybe a little odd on the, on the uh, initiatives, I guess, additional park initiatives.
There's a couple of those, you've got uh, Legion Avenue, North Park, it's just a woods.
Yeah.
Part of a pond with no access, no sign, no nothing.
Yeah. So.
So you like the memorial idea?
I do, I do, I don't know where it sits on far, as far as a priority goes, but, yeah.
We have VFW and, and there's.
Yeah.
Placks, but it could be expanded.
Or maybe a little more pronounced, I don't know. Yeah, I would think that's where it might be, by the VFW wall field, it's a little obscure location.
Well, and honestly, the example that I come, comes to mind for me, hmm, my family and I will go to St. Paul Park every once in a while during the summer and they took basically a leftover parcel when there was, when sixty-one was redone and there's a new entrance ramp, some land became available. It turned into a dead end, they put the memorial right there, during the summer, they do car shows. And the food trucks come in and literally, there'll be hundreds of people on a place that was, used to be a completely unused spot, but they combined multiple things for multiple purposes and I, we're twice the size of St. Paul Park. And so I, I, St. Paul Park did a great thing, it was a great thing for their, their community and I use that just as one example. And, but obviously, in terms of prioritizing, I don't know where, but it is something that has always confused me, that we don't have that type of way of honoring those who served.
I wonder if there's a, available funding um, for something like that. I guess in other communities, I thought that some of those memorial parks were um, were donated or the fundraising by the veterans groups, but, um, but I'm wondering from a state standpoint, is there any grant or or available funding to do something in a community, um, I certainly would support that, I.
Might know a guy that would know.
Cause we certainly have the land.
Mayor, um, that, I might not have this correct, but m- my recollection was that the comp plan had called for a cent, a city park and that a component of that was a memorial.
I don't remember that specific point.
I might not, I might have had that vision in my head, it's maybe where that came from.
Yeah, it's supposed to be like a twenty acre community park in the downtown area and
Yeah.
As you look at the aerials of the old Village area, that twenty acres really doesn't exist.
Yeah, so yeah, and, and I fully acknowledge, that might be something that I created it as a vision of what it would look like, and, and when I had heard it wasn't happening, I had kind of um, thought that well, the Park Commission, uh, to my recollection, really never weighed in at all on the city, the Central Park.
We've asked a couple of questions, but.
Yeah, and, and so, anyway, if that's a priority, certainly, that's I don't know, that's the first I've heard of it, but um, we definitely have, have it on the list if it needs to be on the list.
What would that consist of, I mean, I, I was in Florida and I saw like a, took a picture at, at a veterans park, it had the, you know, the big, nice flagpole and then it was like a big black plaque with like, you know, obviously engraved into, what is, what are you picturing? I mean, I completely agree with the idea, I'm just.
I, I can always say from experience, I am not an artist whatsoever, but sometimes you will see not only that the plaque's with names, but you might have some artistic features, whether it's a piece of artwork, something to memorialize like a statue of a, a military personnel, like, there are various ways, you might have there where there's also a, not a grandstand per se, but some type of a, a space where people gather and they might do shows there as well, like that's where July fourth, you then have a, a community gathering where you have a band doing stuff, so it, it will vary, but yes. Flag, plaque, statue of some sort is the bare minimum, but above and beyond that, to me, that'd be a community input thing. Like, again, you can go to a hundred small towns across the state or otherwise and you'll find something. And I think that'd be one of those things of what looks, what would fit best, what is something that, from the Parks Commission, from the council, from the community, from staff, what'll be the things that would compute to be something that would fit.
Still Waters is just north of their historic courthouse and they've got some architectural things in there and I think they have their farmer's market there on Tuesday afternoons or something like that, but yeah, they've got a little surrounding area with brick pavers and whatnot and. Yeah, eh, I think it's pretty attractive.
Sometimes the bricks themselves will have people's names on it, cause those are the ones who donated to help build it.
Yeah.
Mayor.
Yes.
Maybe realistically, I don't think we'd ever be able to tackle that, the two of us in twenty twenty-three.
But in.
No, I'm not saying it.
Are you kidding?
Twenty-six, you guys are scaring me here.
No, I don't wanna scare you Marty, but, you know, when we're thinking about things, maybe that's something in the future.
Yeah, for sure.
But I, I will be honest, that's a, that's the first time I've heard about it and, you know, it's, it's kind of a true statement, but yeah, we, we can't stuff ten pounds of potatoes in a five-pound bag, right, that just doesn't work.
I think a good strategy is as people go around and see something they like, just send a picture, you know, to Adam or Marty and we can just put it in a folder and we get around the budgetary period for you know, twenty twenty-six budget, you, we can kinda say, hey, this, you know, do you wanna spend the money on this type of thing? Cause we can do the work for twenty twenty-six maybe.
There might be years where we have a little bit of a break in between projects.
So the other thing is when, you know, you bring up the park benches and you bring up the tree plantings, right? If, if you can explain kind of a vision and a place for it, there are Legions and VFWs that they, JCs, they look for places to donate their money, right? So, but they're not gonna just say, I, most of them are gonna say, I'm just gonna give them ten grand towards whatever they wanna do, right? But if you create kind of a vision of what it could look like, just, ah, I kinda like that, right, I'm gonna put my, put my money into it. People didn't put their bricks in the site of Huntington Bay Stadium because they just thought, well, U of M's gonna build a stadium, no, they, they saw a rendering of it, they saw a picture of it, that's cool, I'm gonna be part of that, right, that's, that's how you generate that interest and that, that money. So if you have some, like, park benches, if you had an example, you could have a park bench here in your favorite park and this is kind of what we're looking for, for a donation. I think we wanna stay away from people building their own park benches from a liability standpoint, but um, but, I mean, you got, people want that vis- visual of what it could be, right? And then, then they can kinda create an attachment to that, that thing and say, I really wanna be a part of that, I like that.
How about, is the city ever approached by people doing Eagle Scout projects or something like that, you know, this could be something.
I don't know that, yeah, they, they come around every once, but they're usually building some, some, you know, trail marking they will build some benches or things of that nature too.
So they usually come with their own ideas, it's not something like, say, we have a list of things, you know, if someone's looking for a project to do?
They're flexible, I don't, you know, I was never an Eagle Scout, so. Bout out at Wee Below stage.
Another thing that you're, I, I'm sorry.
No, yeah, we do get approached about every year from at least one Eagle Scout or a member of the Boy Scouts, uh, looking to do some type of project. A lot of times they have their, their items already uh, figured out, it's replacement of birdhouses, duckhouses and stuff like that in Sunfish. Um, we had a bridge built up in Clies, we had, um.
They offered to build a changing room in Sunfish, but they faded away.
A lot of times they bring their own ideas.
Okay, alright, okay, so another sidebar, so you talked about the, the VFW monument or whatever. When my husband and I go on road trips, we always stop for lunch, we bring a picnic lunch, we go through towns and we look for the sign that says City Park. So we know we can find a picnic table there, I don't think we have anything like that here, you know, for people traveling through. You know, like for Lions Park or something.
You mean just a sign?
Just a sign, it says City Park, two blocks, and you go down there and there's a playground there and a picnic table and we sit and eat, you know. And, and then we check out, well, what else is in this town that we might wanna stop and see, you know?
That's back to your outreach, which is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It brings up memories of our sign conversation on roads from the EDA.
Yes. Is that about all we got for this evening?
It is.
Alright, well, uh, given that, I just wanna thank everybody for their efforts and.